Hello.
How are you doing, sir?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Busy day in court?
Uh, it's an eight center.
Go right in. Oops, sorry.
Hi Susan. Micah.
Hi.
How are you?
All right, how about you?
I'm all right.
You're good.
Enjoyed some of your subway?
Deli's probably pretty good, too.
Is that across the street?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it wasn't open though. I didn't see anybody over there.
We're ready.
Twenty seconds. You're supposed to say stand by?
Yeah.
And then three, two.
You ready?
Oh.
There we go. I said three, two. Here we go. We need to order change of pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this time to have a meeting and to come together as a community. Tonight, we ask for special strength and mercy for our brothers and sisters in Texas as the recovery and rescue efforts continue. We ask that you guide them and just give them strength. We ask this in Jesus' glory's name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Before we begin, so good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for attending the July 7th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Bourbon County. We will begin the order of business in a few minutes. We ask that you silence your phones and take any private conversations to the lobby. Those that have signed up for public comment will be called to the table by the chair. If the chair opens the floor for comments relating to other agenda items, those wishing to speak will raise their hands and wait to be recognized. Criticism and praises are welcome equally. We do ask that speakers are respectful and follow the decorum outline for public comments posted in the lobby. Thank you again and welcome to tonight's meeting. Uh, let's see. Approval of the agenda. Is there any corrections?
I'd like to add the invoice for stronghold for the interim.
Okay. We want to put that in consent?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to add before old business, after the first executive session, another executive session for attorney-client privilege.
Me, too.
Yeah, it could be, yeah. And then also have three resolutions I would like to add to new business. That could be at the bottom.
Okay. Do you, what are they?
Uh, so we have a resolution for the parliamentarian to the Board of Commissioners, zoning advisory committee, and employee benefits committee.
Okay. There's one more. Oh, there should be one for, did you say budget advisory?
Yeah.
Okay. Parliamentarian, budget advisory, zoning.
Zoning advisory. Okay, we just needed to have that.
Okay.
So we don't have budget.
Yeah, I didn't get it though.
Okay. We'll add that next week.
Okay. And then I did see on here also, there's a, something's doubled up. Housing agreement and juvenile detention. Those are the same thing, kinda?
Yeah.
So, one or the other.
We can combine them.
So which one are we taking off?
Let's take off the housing agreement.
Okay.
And then also, let's table fence viewing resolution.
Okay. To what date?
And we'll table it till next week.
Okay.
And also, I want to just go ahead and cancel on the public work safety audit with Dr. Cohen.
Okay.
And then we'll bring that back up at a later date, at a future date. So we just cancel it.
Okay.
And that's it. That, I see. Any other changes? Commissioner Tran?
No, sir.
No, sir. All right. I move that we accept the agenda as corrected.
Second. You're there.
Yes.
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 I move for approval of minutes from 6:30, 2025, and 7:01, 2025, as distributed.
Most recently?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And I move for the approval of the consent agenda for 6:24, 25 accounts payable totaling $110,518.99 and a stronghold invoice for $6,800?
Monthly, yeah.
Monthly.
Second. You're there? Yes. You're there?
Yes.
Yes.
And public hearing for 5:35, Plaster Road closing. Anybody here to speak about Plaster Road in Hyattville?
We'll have to open the hearing.
So open the public hearing at 5:36.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I move that we open the public hearing for Plaster Road closing.
Second.
You're there?
Yes.
Train?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
There's nobody here. You open the, just open the hearing. Ask if there's anybody here to speak to and you can move on action.
Anybody here to speak on that? I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Then I move that we approve the closing of Plaster Road.
What will this resolution be, Susan? 2325. 2325.
Second.
You're there? Yes. You're there?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it just a closure or a vacation?
Vacation of road.
Yeah. It is a vacation. Cool. Do we need to amend that or?
Closing and vacation are two different things.
That's it.
You can just, can you just send the last motion and move to vacate?
So you're vacating the road, you're not closing the road? So you're vacating the road right away?
Yeah.
Move to adopt that resolution.
Okay, I'll just, I'll do it this way. I moved to adopt resolution 2325, vacation of road, 60 feet road of 128 between lot five sub of lot one, block eight, and lot two of block eight, Hyattville, Kansas.
Second.
You're there? Yes. You're there?
Yes.
Yes.
I move pursuant to KSA 754319B1 to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Be the three commissioners and county councilor.
Second.
For, we'll return what, 15, 20 minutes? One, 20 minutes?
20, 20.
Okay. We'll return at 6 o'clock. To these chambers.
You're there?
Yes.
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 Comes back on the tent poles.
I think it's in town, so.
Oh. Incorporated?
Yeah. Were highly educated, what? Well, I think there's a bigger income disparity in Bourbon County than other counties.
But we have a bachelor's degree? Or is that saying?
Bachelor in advance. There's masters and doctorates. Anybody that has a degree above, bachelor of others in that.
They collect that data at the census every 10 years?
The, no, the, the only data from the census is the population there. Everything else is from the University of Kansas. They produce a Kansas statistical abstract every year with all, all the data from around Kansas.
They actually poll people or do they get this?
I'm not sure how they get each data point. Sure they poll some from the census. I'll bet they do, yeah.
The census probably goes around as a self-aware questionnaire and asks that question.
That census, from KU, they might not count K-State degrees.
If you have two weeks, that doesn't count either.
You're in or you're out. Can't be in twice. You only have one thing, they only count you as a half of the population. It's good, John, the California.
There's a lot of reasons for that.
I've got a solution for Yale Road. You need to have this great Republican event out there in someplace along Yale Road with fantastic food and a big guest speaker and have all the Republicans here.
Perfect. Set a booth along every mile marker.
Yeah, sure. Sell hubcaps.
Yep.
What other stat would you want to see on there? I told you. Well, that, that'll have to be a completely separate deal. I don't know if we can get, I don't know if we can get it from other counties or not. I wouldn't care. My batteries don't think it's really 10% a year. I, you know, back when we had 2% of money, the FBI. It's just interesting to compare counts. No, I'm, I'm only concerned with one county.
But this is interesting.
Yeah. It, it just like agrees. You know, is that percentage good or bad? Well, it turned out it's pretty good when you compare it to the county.
And we don't know before, before you're a school or a child.
Educated people coming up.
Maybe we could just start marrying families.
Marry them in the road or in the law hold. I got you. Do you want people to hear us? There's more that going on than you can believe.
One of the respondents to that is, they're running there.
Miranda's tonight.
But that won't count, but you're for the man. Anyway, he said, I saw 10 hubcaps.
My wife should get called in, doesn't mean sanctuary. She'll be up to. Whoa, you could have to back up on it. That, that can't be.
So how much, so this count was reported, they took this time.
They were working on it for $19. Yes, I, all my hobbies went away when my first wife died. I was a single dad. Yeah. All right, now I'm, I'm. I finally, that's off my top slopes. Do you hear between all this grand scene for graduation? They're really nice that. He's going away to college. Where is my hundred dollar? I'm not gonna borrow. I just bought these two rips. What has Henry tells me? Oh, I get paid for parks. Sure. Yeah, how many pounds is a couple? Nine and 20. How much money? Not 30, you didn't get. 30, 30, 31, 32 or something. Well, 32 would be eight. We have all the. Anyway. Four-wheelers and. It was no cart pounds. All those counts. $3 would be 27. I said four dollars shooting range. I have $6 on my city. So how's that four dollars compared to the. I'm getting there. Good. I started out with just a little concealed carry 380. And then went to a 20. And then I went to a 12-pound shotgun. They all hatched it up. Too bad. I did have a public gun with a neat target set. So we tried to really testify. We usually don't, I can get one green kid. That's three, that's a mountain, I can get. Yeah. 160.
I'm gonna need your one pool that.
I have my three. Insurance. How old, how old is your youngest child? Your oldest is. He's still a teenager. So your oldest is people buying this, can you? $100 is happy?
No, I got it.
Kind? It's dark, yeah. That's where I was going to do it.
$100. $4.
That's what they paid you, $1600. Kim's youngest was 30 days old.
Now, another four hundred, another $100.
My wife, the first wife I adopted, was African-American. And she. That makes. $2,000. Those two are only 33 days. So that makes this $5. Right, this 400 pound string. The teachers would say, oh, you can't wait to meet him. Well, here who I grew. That's getting ready to roll. There, there. So I, I say it's actually. 250 more there. They made them a very good team. Two thousand, but I, two hundred. So Kim gave the day to me. African-American son, I do, he spent four years in the Marines. And he got out and this, this was then, they were just 18. After he got, I need to go home and say he gets sent here. $2,000. He was a supervisor. Would you point five or two fifty? Yeah. $8. So they're paying $8 a year. I got ready for that. That's him now. 20. And the people would want to do this all the time.
No.
Well, I'm not having that covered myself. I mean, you can buy a hammer. My point is. That's my oldest.
I know it's coming up, it's still early. Are you certain or people to work yet?
Yeah. How much? It depends how much we can put into them now. So if you sold for 2,500 to sell for 31, how much is 31?
Cause we're not having that. There was one race that could have picked us in Ryanair and you got.
$5,000, $5,000, $5,000 is 2,500.
So it's way early, yes. I would have, I think I hit five people.
And that's your median ends. Same number of houses above and below. So. So to put capital, they just take the total income for the county and divide by the number of people. So you've got, you've got a handful of people making $10,000, $20,000 a year. It's skyrocketing for capitalism. So what that tells me is there's a. We have a term of harvest.
No, I've been working, my daughter's been working in August. She can't, don't get working unless she's.
Education. Well, we got a lot of.
My granddaughter, Genesis, has been working. But she's working on Walmart now, so she can make the, as long as she's got time to put it in. And then I have one that's, she's, she'll be 18.
So probably about 80.
Didn't involve that, I think, on, that just developed. Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, we're gonna try and get the school to enroll and try to help.
We got a problem.
I'm gonna talk with the teacher, her mom, just to let, she goes through.
So I'm thinking we do. Our population, they draw a few guys.
I can't tell you. I'm not helping that school, even though that grade just got.
Yeah, I think.
Give me one of them, I'll get my niece. But I knew I can go and skip.
There's something I noticed in Cherokee County.
When you help, so. Yeah, well, I think you're nice.
Same people being arrested.
I enjoy doing this.
And now I've seen.
I was thinking we have one in August, well, I said.
I think you start wearing out your well. You have a better case. Exactly. Where are they not sticking at your house?
It is what it is.
One of the kids had two drinks. Something, anyway.
Nope, it's a line, you know. I have one. I guess a way to go and do it. Getting off, talk to my daughter whether or not she's able to get off. But at least she took off last year. Yes. Yes, be happy to. We're still trying to get so can we get us, at least we gotta send out new voting cards to everybody. But we're still trying to write the legal's on in the precincts, that's, I'll take it they're hanging out right now.
Um, I think there's still a few strikers. Got a child in life, work out. It's been so long ago that most of her retired. I know Kevin Moier is the local minister, his wife worked for us.
You know, I don't need help. I'm doing great, because my knee was replaced back in like September thirty nineteen. I'm doing great, I can have, I was then, I started using my cane because I didn't feel scared, so I thought. And the pain is serious. My mom, she, it affected her nerves, like, she hurts a lot. And you tell me, Doc, that, I went to him two weeks ago, and they put me in having nuclear medicine bone scan.
Six hundred.
It's my knee, and I tell him it's ready, and he said, it doesn't work that way. I said.
I would say.
Okay.
I don't know.
Two thousand dollars.
I said, my knee hurts, and they took x-ray of my hip and my back, and so I got my ass. Well, now they told me, I realized my hip is really involved.
Well, you're probably walking, walking, jumping, so that's.
And I, this leg is about this much longer than my leg.
From my left.
She handed out, my dad built this. I got to do, exactly, and. But something's gotta happen, when I got up. I. I just couldn't walk, I'm walking down, I. It's been a week now since they did the bone scan. So I told Clint, you know, until Wednesday, they hadn't called me by yet, because we're gonna be at the doctor's tomorrow. They hadn't called by then. They had to move up. Just don't care their own condition. Fix it so they. When I knew it was here, just run. And I kept doing it. Unusual.
Six hundred to seven hundred.
I'm afraid.
You know, two pounds a day, that'd be seventy five days.
Steness, and sometimes my leg feels like it's just gonna get totally out.
Did you knock? Is it time?
It's fast.
Six oh one.
We're waiting for a knock.
Okay, meeting, uh, I move to meeting and return to session.
Second. Yes.
Yes.
No action at this time. I move that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA. Seventy five dash forty three nineteen. B two for consultation with attorney for public body of agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. And this will be for fifteen minutes, we'll return at six seventeen to these chambers. Be the three commissioners and the county counselor.
What time?
Six fifteen.
Seventeen?
Or six seventeen, I'm sorry, fifteen minutes. You'll have a second.
Moving, yes.
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 Any improvement with Ally?
I think it separated. MRI done sometime soon. I don't know, insurance, all our insurance is gonna change, so.
I don't even like trying to get free a frivolous. Is she an active teen?
I'm too tired to arm myself, so. My firewood arm, it's really.
Okay, we'll have to think of some other means then.
Yeah.
You're just tagging, you're just tagging me in?
Yeah, you're just. You're in charge. I'm asking every time. I think it takes the day off after we get back.
What are you gonna do?
Um, I stay home, but just a lot of fireworks, but I don't know, if we're gonna return, can I go up and come?
Check a nice little.
Hmm, did you?
Not too bad. Worked, worked some, and I got to enjoy part of it too.
There was like, I felt like crazy when I was this year.
I don't know. Which is kind of surprising, you know, the cost, the price.
We used a lot of bars, I was sick last year, so we wouldn't play our job, and so, at that point, I'm very good for. I'll stay far away.
Scott's just playing his games. It's surprising, I'm not everyone. Attending the event, because we went all day, now is there at various times. No, it wasn't bad. They come off, get in the day. I don't know.
I have the lake fireworks for Saturday night, but we didn't, no, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, no. There was some fireworks, I thought, I was, like, showing, and then we watched the lake show. Um, to the record, we were just commemorating them as mine, or Sugar Valley, I guess they had. One couple always takes care of their nation, and an entire other couple, each other.
Sugar Valley. I was thinking like Scott. Okay, okay.
Sketch.
Yeah, yes.
Sugar Valley had an entire little stream, within another second, show on the whole tour, providing.
Really?
Unplanned. Just like.
Part of yours. Yeah.
Well, people, well, there's things going on.
So I, so I brought some of the.
Yeah, it's actually, the people we live with, it's this right here. It was, um, the Cape Town, it's growing, it's, it's, like, a river.
Inside the truck.
We have a meeting, we have a. It's something, um, I mean, I'm kind of, we have almost all three of them, but. It's enough that makes it like a, there's anybody that is actually thinking of.
Translation.
Especially if it's raining.
Whatever, on your outside. Is that a?
I've gotten stuck a little. They're not concerned. Translation. Kind of left there and worrying about them, because if you can't.
They're hoping I'll go almost three thousand dollars worth of.
And it takes them offering.
We don't have to send it to the, you know, what's in that, to your own property.
They're gonna do one round, but they asked a Torah.
She doesn't know.
Hidden valley, but they tore it from hidden valley.
There's not a process, you don't reach out to people, try and collect, I mean, you just.
Lockwood Motors is on there.
I know. I had one paper set, but I didn't put it on there, I'm just kind of, I need to research it.
Was that seventy six cent?
Yeah, it's ridiculous, isn't it?
Because you wanted to send it.
Well, and what happened, if somebody finds this check later on, it's sent to the bank, but I'm not paying it twenty five dollars per.
Roses and chandeliers up like that?
Yeah.
It takes a lot.
They float through.
They float through.
I mean, you guys, trying to take care of.
Small and joy.
They, they still. So at that point, I'll have to decide what to do, but.
Everything's done electronically, air.
But I want anything.
We had our available checks, anything, five thousand, required two signatures.
Check that.
You check it, it's signed.
It's cheaper to pay for the reversements than the check or your check.
Yeah.
I'm old enough that I had to go back and pass my bank and find all the checks.
We used to fly cancel checks from downtown airport to Chicago every night. It's a good time to build a gig, but so lonely.
So that was just right after the writers.
Right after the writers, yeah.
Right after the writers, yeah. Yeah.
Are we?
No.
Go by.
No.
Move or return to session?
Second.
Yes.
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 No action. Uh, next is Old Business Zoning Advisory Board, is that that res- resolution that we're talking about here?
No. No, that is actually, I, the bylaws that, um, somebody presented.
Me?
Um, I wasn't actually here when that one was set up, but I did get a copy of those bylaws and it did say in the bylaws after the. I'll just, so I'm not talking out of order here.
The resolution that passes it.
Oh, dissolution?
Yeah, did you find it in there?
Okay, so we need to get a hold of the committee chairman before we continue to dissolve that committee.
Um.
Or we can just.
I believe the bylaw stated.
Article eight, it's article eight dissolution says the advisory, and I apologize for interrupting.
Uh-huh.
The advisory committee chairman will present recommendation as an agenda item on the next scheduled meeting of the board of commissioners. The dissolution of the advisory committee will, would commence at the conclusion of the presentation.
And they gave their presentation last week.
Um, by law amendments, that's the last article, article nine. After notice to membership, the members of advisory committee may and may not revoke these bylaws at any regular or special meeting duly convened. For your edifications. Commissioner.
Yeah, I got it right here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'd, I'd say, well, let's table it and then we'll get a hold of the advisory, zoning advisory committee chair person and have her come in next week. And make a motion, because that's what it's saying on the, to, you know, it has to be at her recommendation.
Is that how you read it?
Mm-hmm.
I think I read it that it's just dissolved when, after they give the presentation, is what, what did, what do you think, Commissioner Tran?
I think that's what it says.
Okay, then I make a motion that we dissolve the zoning advisory committee.
Second.
That resolution does that, if you want to read it.
Okay.
Whereas dissolve, dissolution of the zoning advisory committee will be at the conclusion of the recommendation to the board of county commissioners. And that's already been met, so, what number will this one be?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-five. I move that we adopt resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, Bourbon County Zoning Advisory Committee dissolution of the committee. Um, this date and time, July, the seventh day of July, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Tran?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And next is the resolution. Again, Nuna, what's the next number?
Before we give it a number, we should, um, vote to, or read it, see what we're gonna pass.
Okay, so the next resolution, uh, presented is Employee Benefit Committee. Um, whereas the Bourbon County Commission makes important decisions regarding employee benefits for the Bourbon County. Whereas the Bourbon County Commission would like to form a benefits committee to review employee benefits and make recommendations to the commission in regards. To premium renewals and plan structure and will meet with the Bourbon County's insurance broker quarterly. Whereas the, the formation of this committee will be comprised of voting members from the following categories. An employee who does not take part in the county insurance, an employee who takes part in single coverage through Bourbon County. Employee who takes part in employee slash spouse, spouse coverage through Bourbon County. And an employee who takes part in employee slash children coverage, and an employee who takes part in family coverage. Whereas the committee will be comprised of three non-voting members, an appointed commissioner, the county clerk, and the payroll clerk. Whereas an interested employee should send a letter of interest with any background qualifications regarding benefits to the county clerk for selection. By the county commission, this committee will be reviewed on an annual basis by the county commission for its effectiveness and changes to. To the direction of the committee, whereas attached to this resolution are adopted bylaws of the Bourbon County Commission. Now therefore be resolved by the Bourbon County Kansas Board of Commissioners to form a benefit committee to review employee benefits. And make recommendations to the commission regarding premiums, renewal, and plan structure and will meet with Bourbon County's insurance broker quarterly. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Um, he might add that it repeals nineteen twenty-five.
Okay. That's not in here, you can add that to that, okay.
I can just write it on it.
Okay.
A second.
Okay.
The number.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
What was it again?
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Number?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Could hand us the Commissioner Melbourne, please, thank you.
All right, and I move that. That was the same one.
So it wasn't there.
Employees' benefit?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, was, okay, so, uh, next resolution to consider will be, um, parliamentarian, uh, to the board of commission. Whereas the board of county commission wishes to conduct meetings in an effective and orderly fashion in accordance with resolution zero-nine dash two-five code of conduct. Resolution ten dash two-five meeting rules of order and resolution eleven dash two-five rules of decorum for public meetings and forums. Whereas the Bourbon County Commission wishes to appoint a neutral party, non-voting advisor to the chair and commission. As provided in the standard operating procedures as attached. Now therefore be resolved by the Bourbon County Kansas Board of Commissioners. Will appoint a parliamentarian, a neutral party, non-voting advisor to the chair and commission. This, uh, parliamentarian may change from time to time upon the vote of the commission. Be it resolved this seventh day of July, twenty-twenty-five by the Bourbon County Commissioners. I move that we adopt this resolution, be twenty-six dash twenty-five.
Second.
Your mouth?
Yes.
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 Good. There you go, sir.
Okay, next on the agenda in Old Business will be Stronghold Update, Commissioner Melbourne.
Okay, give me just a moment if you don't mind.
Okay.
Sorry.
You may move on to another one and?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we've tabled, um, the juvenile, uh, we'll go with animal control and that would be me. Uh, we were approached several meetings back regarding an animal rescue shelter and, um, there's, uh. Ellen Taylor had, had asked for, um, some help in this, maybe some property. Um, I want to discuss the possibility of using, um, a portion of twenty-three point four-four acres on Native Road. Which would be, uh, the old dump, and I don't know, we might, we'll have to get some legal, look at, you know, look at it from the legal pa- aspect of. I mean, it's county-owned property, um, it's the former dump.
Do you have a city, city animal control? Do they, do they have animal control in the city?
Yeah, they do.
You have a county animal control, you don't?
What's that about, sweetie?
It's, uh, next to Oak Grove Cemetery on Native Road. It's gonna be, um, S nineteen to twenty-five, R twenty-five is the legal. So I'm not for sure, I mean, it was a former landfill, I'm not for sure as to when it can be, the property can be, uh, opened up for use, but. It is a, and, and then it would be pending upon whether or not they, uh, the, a group would be willing to come forward and. And get grants and oper-, you know, and, and have the structure built and stuff like that, because I, I just don't see the county doing it, not with taxpayer dollars.
I don't know if that lady's doing it anymore, I've seen some updates on the internet.
Okay, well, and, and, and that would be, then, then if there is any volunteers or any groups out there that would want to come forward, but. I mean, I first would like to see if, if, if we have the viability to use a portion of that land for that purpose, so. What's that?
I think that landfill may have a thirty-year restriction on it.
There's certainly a time restriction, I don't know if there's thirty or not.
I don't know when it started, but.
That's something we can look into, and that's, that's just, I mean, that was just, I looked at all the county property, you know, that. I was given a list of property that we owned and that was the, the only one that I found that I thought was, would be, uh. Considered, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you want to have a viability of the group that, that's wanting to do it and a reclamation prob-, you know, what they're.
Yeah, and it need to be a, you know, nonprofit, that, all that, that, she came forward, you know, asking about it. And I know there are several other people out there that, uh, that have done animal rescues and that, that collect money every year for, uh, other programs and stuff like that. So if any of them want to come forward and, or her, and, you know, then we can look at the viability of that, of that property. But that's where I'm at on that, how you guys want to approach it. I can get you the list of other properties, but, and see what else is available out there that we own, I mean, that the county owns.
I think we need to bring somebody to the table that could do. Like I said, I, I don't know if she's still doing that, if she's still on that, so.
Yeah, I hadn't heard from her either.
Yeah.
Since they, since, uh, Mrs. Dare brought her on, uh, and had her on the phone that night, so. We might want to see how that is, she, she's not here tonight, see how that's proceeding, but I just, I, I didn't want it to fall wayside, I keep looking and. And then there's some other people out there that I've had conversation with that are willing to be part of a volunteer program. If, if we were able to have a pro-, you know, a place for it and a building is able to be put up, but I've looked at grants and there's, there's a lot of grants that help finance, uh. Programs and stuff like that, very few that actually provide for, for construction, so.
Does it have to be here?
Well, we've talked about maybe teaming up with Allen County or.
Cause there's one, is you're going into Allen County.
It's, uh, A-Car, if it's in La Harve, and Allen County supports them to some degree.
When we had talked about that.
But it's a private, it's a private.
So it's an NGO.
Yeah.
And then this one came, this came up, that's why I, I didn't pursue going to Allen County.
I think they're constantly out of space, I mean.
Yeah, well, we, we, we tried to use them and ended up using the Humane Society in Crawford County to house some animals that the sheriff's department had recently. In a case that they were working, so, um, there's something that we need to think about. I mean, I think there is times when we have a need for it, there is definitely a need in this county, uh, countywide, because the city don't take animals from out in the county.
Yeah.
Because of their overpopulation of what they got, so.
And I had previously spoke to Brad and asked him if we could do some kind of, yeah, agreement, and he said, word, we really don't have space to do that.
And then I think just here recently, there was talk, I mean, there was Facebook chatter about the, the cat population and. That's just going crazy in this community.
So, if we don't team up, then instead of dropping off a dog or a cat in the city limits, we just drop them off in the county.
As a matter of fact, I think there's a gentleman in this audience that, uh, saved a mother dog and pups here recently, so.
If we don't end up doing something like that, maybe we could, um, in our budget meeting, talk about, uh, maybe creating some. Uh, like an animal control policy where we do some, some spay or neuter, um.
There is some of those, I mean, there is some people out there that do volunteer programs on that, uh, on that, you know, part of that deal, but. And they collect money, they have, uh, sales out of four each about two or three times a year. Uh, I mean, if there is a group that wants, I mean, I, I would try everything that we could, you know, uh, using, utilizing our own, uh, grant research people and. And stuff like that to kind of, you know, facilitate this and get it moving forward, I, I think there is a need, especially in, uh, with animals that get dropped off into county. I mean, I think there is a need for us to have something, and like I said, Allen County, I mean, any county around, there's, there's some, you know, they're either full or, or there's. Uh, just not enough space, you know, so, I think there is a need for it, I just don't know how, you know. Uh, where are we going to come up with the budget money to do that?
Yeah, and I've seen this on here, and so I did do a little bit of research on the impact of the spaying and neutering, um, to help the overpopulation. So maybe if we don't get a facility, maybe we could look into just doing something like that.
Catch your gaze.
Yeah, I don't really know, helping somebody else that's already on the mission, you know?
I mean, uh, like I said, there's a gentleman in this, in this audience that has recently, you know, saved a mother dog and pups and stuff like that. Where do you go with it, I mean, nobody want, you know, there's no place around and stuff, so, you gotta try to find homes for the puppies and.
It's, it's not a unique problem, every small county in Kansas.
Oh, I know, I know, it's, uh, you know, we had some people that step up, maybe they, they're, they're not capable of doing it now, but there's other people out there, so. I'm just saying, anybody out there that has, uh, has, uh. You know, wanting to be part of a rescue operation or something, willing to volunteer time, we can come up with grant money or something to, to build a facility and we can use. Some county property that has not been used or can be used to do that, I mean, I, I see that as a win-win, so, um. Mr. Motley?
So the spay and neutering, uh, idea, uh, the community foundation, of course, County Community Foundation. Got an application just about every year to, to do grants for that, but when we researched it, the problem was is that proving ownership of an animal when it's brought in for spay and neuter. You don't want to spay or neuter somebody's pet.
Right.
Doesn't want that done, so, the problem is proving ownership of animals when they're brought in. And, and that's, that's normally a veterinarian who, oh, I know this pet belongs to this person, so that's, that's the problem with spaying.
Yeah. It's not an easy solution to our problem countywide, you know, with animals being dropped off and, and, uh, other cases that we have to deal with, so. Um, but I think there might be some people out there that'd be willing to step forward, let me just see what we can do.
Okay.
Sorry, is there not a facility south on Jayhawk?
No, they became a private chemilis from, from what I heard, I'm not for sure about how that, I mean, when it started, it was a, uh, do-, you know. Donated land, donated deal, but then I think that changed, so, um, it's, it's, I know it's no longer available. Anybody else have any input?
Let me ask a question on that, so the one he's talking about in Jayhawk, it was donated land initially?
Well, it was private, I mean, you know, she didn't donate it to the county.
Okay, so it was private?
Yeah.
And then?
Somebody had a heart for it and then later on it, it trained, changed hands or whatever, I, I don't know the full story, I don't, won't pretend to, to know. But I just know it's not available now, it's not an option for us, so, all right, well then we'll move on to.
We can go back to.
Stronghold update.
Did we, are we doing this, did we, did you already talk about juvenile detention? Did we, are we doing this? Did we, did you already talk about juvenile detention?
I said we, we tabled that.
Oh, okay, what day are we tabling that to? I'm sorry.
Uh, I don't know, uh, just.
Give it two weeks.
Two weeks.
Twenty-first? Okay. Okay, so stronghold, um. We have an interim contract with stronghold, and they're covering us until we send out to some bids, and they're covering the city under us as well. Um, they plan to be on site Mondays and Fridays moving forward um to make sure that we're working anything and everything out, that we need to be working on the kinks. So, um. They're wanting to have a meeting Thursday to give us some preliminary results. Uh, and so they would like the city to be involved and us to be involved. And so they said that it can just be one of us with the cities, so we don't have to do a whole meeting, but I would rather us all do it if you guys would be inclined about seven.
Is the city willing to allow us to come into, is it that when their regular meeting is, is on Thursdays or?
Um.
Tuesday?
So we would just have to get, if we wanna have a special meeting, we would make that and then invite the city.
Okay.
Would you guys be fine with having a special meeting Thursday around three forty-five?
You good with that? I'm good with that.
Who's bringing bratwurst?
Bratwurst? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
What time are you thinking?
Three forty-five, that'd be okay? No, four?
Four thirty.
Four thirty, okay. I'll tell them, okay?
Okay, and invite the city.
Yeah.
Is that an executive session or?
I imagine some of it will be. They may talk a little bit out here, but.
We both.
Cause for a special meeting, I'll need to propose if that's what it is. So, regular and executive session?
Yes.
For security, okay.
So that's on ten.
And I need to take a five-minute recess. So a little recess for five minutes, return at six forty-five.
Daughter playing summer softball?
Yeah, I watched it the other night.
Hasn't been a great sound.
First one's a little bit.
Is that her labor? Is that her elbow? Or shoulder?
She's good. Oops, sorry. Oh, is this for my binder?
Those are originals, man. I'm gonna give you originals from mine.
Do you guys have a charger for this thing? See, I got this kinda chargers. I don't use these. It's USDC. You got one? No, it's not that big of a deal. I just thought I'd plug in a wall over here. Oh, yes, okay, thank you.
Catch.
Yes, got it. Oh, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
I told the sheriff the good news. Mr. Train.
Huh?
I told the sheriff the good news. I told the sheriff the good news.
Oh, no.
There's not much left, is there?
Moving on.
You guys usually go to the KAC convention? You, you guys usually go to the KAC convention?
I don't know.
Never been. Never been.
Well, you haven't been a commissioner long enough.
I know, is this one of those, is one of those places like you, you go, is, I'm just.
It used to be in October, now they do it in December, which is kinda weird.
What did they just have in April? Did they have something in April also?
They have smaller ones. This is, this is, it used to be called the Big KAC. What's that? Sell ads?
Yeah, that was a double. One of them was a double, but it didn't have a signature spot on it. It confused me for a moment too, because all those attachments, some of them had attachments that didn't have signature spot.
Is it West Coast?
Uh, you know, I've been going a long time and usually come out of there with one or two things that maybe. I mean, they usually have some pretty good education for the counselors. I don't know about the commission. They always have hot topic items, you know, like appraisals are always an issue.
Okay, the one that we're not doing.
Uh, tax abatements, wind energy. They'll be, I'm sure there'll be a bunch on data centers, solar, wind.
Okay.
It's usually two, Tuesday and Wednesday. It's in Wichita at the Hyatt. They have a big vendor show that sometimes there's some decent stuff out. You know, it's one of them conferences that if you go there wanting to learn something, you will. If you go there wanting to eat and have a few drinks, you'll do that too.
First one, I don't need to eat any of them.
Thanks.
Usually somebody takes you out to eat like caterpillars or something.
I wonder why.
It's usually through the road and bridge, yeah. You have six hundred thousand dollar graders.
Okay.
For John Deere. What do you guys have, John Deere category?
So we're returning to session. All right, so next on the eye, uh, of old business is cameras. And uh I gave each of you a copy of the proposed policy that I would like to um incorporate in our employee handbook. Um, security, uh, security camera policy, purpose, the policy outlines the guidelines, procedures for the use of security cameras with, within Bourbon County buildings or on Bourbon County property. Bourbon County is dedicated to the safety and security of employees, visitors, and property while respecting individual privacy rights. And then it gives definition, scope, uh prohibited areas, and um placement. I mean, just kind of a rough draft. Cause I think in the new policy manual, we're doing a numbering system. I kinda incorporated.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and I'll uh pass this on to Dr. Cohen to, uh, as they're, are working on a book. And then they'll bring the overall book to us, but I just wanted to kinda, uh, cause we don't have a camera policy at this time.
Okay.
And so, um, I think we need one. I mean, we got cameras out there, um, that are being utilized, and I think we face liability if we don't have some type of policy in, in place. And, uh, so. What's your ideals and thoughts? If you can review it, we can bring it up next week.
Yeah, I better take some time to read this, yeah, yeah.
Can I discuss?
Sure.
So. Funding, the elephant in the room, funding.
For?
For any of this.
It's already there.
It's already there, so we're not.
I think it's limiting, um, I think it's, this is to limit uh access to the cameras that are already there. Is that what it's, this is?
No, it's not really limiting as much as it is creating a policy dictating.
What you can or can't do with it. Yeah, okay, I got, I gotcha.
Cause we have nothing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but it was, hang on, um. I was, procedures for security cameras shall only be installed under the authority of the department head with the final approval by the Bourbon, uh, Board of County Commissioners. So that's what I was reading where I was like, okay.
Yeah, department heads shall provide a written plan.
Thank you.
To the B O C, you know, to the Board of County Commissioners outlining the location and the need for cameras in areas under their authority. Most of those areas already have cameras.
I understand.
But there is no policy dictating the use of those cameras.
So moving forward, let's just say somebody wants to add more cameras.
And I'm saying, the cameras that are existing out there need to fall within the statute. I mean, we pay, I mean, they're, they're paid for by taxpayer dollars.
I got you.
You know, they were budgeted, uh, and it's not really taking the authority away from that department head, but it's saying that, you know, we're not gonna, you know, you can't just put cameras out anywhere without some type of plan of action that says what the cameras are gonna be used for, or we face liabilities.
All right.
I believe, I mean.
So the next question is all video recording will be stored in centralized location under the authority of the Bourbon County Sheriff's Department. Where is it stored at now?
Basement.
I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, I, that's just it. We don't know, you know, there is no policy. The, the department, the departments have not provided any policy regarding, you know, the storage, how long, or.
I think maybe we consult um our interim uh stronghold about it.
Because the reason I'm saying that is like, I, that on, my question on the surface is just. In my experience, having, having a, a system that isn't redundant is not necessarily the best course of action. So if I give all the information to one and don't have it backed up somewhere else, that's, that's, that's something we need to consider because we're crafting a policy letter. The second part of it is, where is it at now? Because if we craft this policy letter and we sign it, we vote on it, we sign it, and let's say it's stored somewhere else, it's not over the sheriff, then you're gonna have to pay to migrate that. So there's a cost associated with that. Does that make sense? I don't necessarily disagree with what you're proposing. I don't. I'm just hoping to fine tune some of it before we have our final conversation on it. Does that make sense, sir?
Yeah.
Other than that, I mean. So we wanna table it for, for, what did you wanna do, sir?
Yeah, I'm fine with tabling it, so you guys can review this and talk to us.
Talk to stronghold?
Yeah.
Yeah. And did you want the fourteenth?
Uh, twenty-first.
Twenty-first, okay.
And that way we don't overload the fourteen.
It's a good idea.
Okay, so that's all of the old business. And moving forward, public comments for items not on the agenda. First up. Um, all motions and actions on the agenda. Michael Hoyt.
That doesn't pertain to this comment period.
Okay. Oh, so you're just wanting all the other?
Just in case, I think.
And so I was told that I, if I didn't have a comment, that I could pass.
That's, that's why you got the card, all right.
All right, thank you very much.
I'll bring you a different card next time.
Okay. All right, next up, uh, is Pete Owenby, hospital.
Greg Motley, I sit down beside him and he explained a lot of stuff to me on the hospital that I didn't understand. I was just wanting to question you guys about, the public doesn't know what's going on at the hospital, as far as I know.
I don't know. I didn't know. And so by visiting with Greg, I was informed of a lot of things. I'd like to, like to see the rest of the public informed of that. That's the only thing I've got really to say about it. And I'm not, I'm not asking Greg to come up here and give a speech or anything. Unless he wants to, I mean.
He doesn't want to, but he will.
And then, uh, you might introduce yourself to the, to the group.
Greg Motley, I'm on the Freeman, Port Scott Board of Directors. What would you?
Like to know?
I was, I was just wondering how the progress is coming on it, how soon we'll have a hospital, how like.
Um, the construction is virtually done. Um, the delay there was, um, a company called Johnson Controls had uh a proprietary s- uh fire suppression system in the building. And uh Crossland and Freeman could not get them to come out and make the adjustments that they needed to. When the hospital building was divided and reconfigured, it needed to be re- reconfigured. Uh, and they couldn't hire anybody else because Johnson Controls is proprietary system. So, um, Crossland and Freeman couldn't get Johnson Controls out to, to do the adjustments on the fire suppression system. And it held up a lot of the construction. And then, uh, finally, and I think Johnson Controls had a lot of new builds going on up in Johnson County. There's a lot of construction going on up there. It was just hard to get their attention. They finally got that done. But then the delay is now you have to get the state and you have to get the federal government. You have to get all these inspectors to come in and say, hey, uh, everything's right. And it's, it's not just, at the end of the day, everything's in. They had to do progress inspections because stuff is behind walls. So Freeman has just pushed the envelope, Crossland has pushed the envelope. But we're a small town and sometimes it's hard to get people attention in the cities and, and, you know, we're small potatoes and there wasn't a lot of money in it for Johnson Controls, but that's done now. Uh, Freeman has done everything they can. I've been extremely impressed with the Freeman people that I've met. I, I met the, the, the recently retired CEO. I met the, the new CEO. I've, I've worked with the CFO of the, of the company and impressed with, uh, with everything I've seen. These are, these are kinda people like us. They're not big city, you know, executives with kind of a cold demeanor. They're just plain folk, and so really, uh, was kinda tentative about being on the board, but glad I'm on the board now and impressed with what they're doing, so.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the thing with Johnson is it has to do with the enunciator and the control panels. It's not necessarily the risers, the sprinklers, and the piping, right?
It's, it's some of that too. That had to be, that had to be done too, because the building was divided and re- reconfigured, and so, yeah. It, it was all, all the above.
Do you know, do you know the status of that building that's behind the, the ambulance shack?
Yeah, that's still owned by uh Legacy and needs to, we need to get that back. Bec- I mean, the county has the right to that building and.
That's been months and months, isn't it?
The paperwork needs to be done to get that back.
We'll have, we'll probably have to do that as a, uh, a discussion, get the agreements and all that stuff and hand them off to, uh, our counselor to review and then see what kinda action we can take on it.
What else? My next question is like, who's, who's, who's?
Yeah, who's doing that?
Who's AOR is that to do the paperwork?
Well, who, who's, who has the contact? Who do you reach out to?
Say, you don't have none of the agreements. I mean, I don't even know where, where most of those agreements.
Who's the contact that we reach out to if?
With ready?
I thought you just said Legacy.
Or Legacy, I'm sorry.
It should have been, may I? Yes, please.
You were speaking as a clerk, correct? Well, I mean, I just want you to introduce that.
I hold the documents.
Okay.
Um, the, though, the last comment that was made in a public meeting was by Mr. Meeks that he was working on that with Legacy. So it should have been passed off to the next counselor.
Susan, can you tell us when that was?
No, it was when, before he left in December, December.
So that's, I remem- if I remember, that's a big old stack of papers.
It's been brought up multiple times in meetings by Laura Holdridge, our register of deed. She's never received the deed. They were supposed to transfer the deed to us.
So I'll, I'll reach out to Justin to find out if he has a file on it. I don't know. I haven't received it. Said it included Ellipor too.
I think that was part of the Freeman.
I don't know, I know it's subdivided.
Or K R I.
It has its own, uh, property description and the deed's office.
Is it still owned by Legacy?
I don't know.
So the two outstanding questions right now is the heliport and the building that's behind the ambulance shack.
I don't think Legacy would want a heliport for any reason, but I would think Freeman would like the use of the heliport for some reasons.
You can get on your iPad there on that G I S and C real quick.
This ambulance shack, is that an official name?
No, it's actually, it's actually, we call it P E B, it's a pre-engineered building, it sits behind, um, it's right behind them, so.
Just a storage book.
Bourbon County EMS.
All right. I'll start with Justin and then get hold some something maybe. I will see what I can find out and report back.
It doesn't show, it just says, um, that's all it shows, Mike. That belongs to S E K.
It what belonged to who?
Community Health Center.
Hmm.
Fort Scott, that's all, that's the.
We did it to them for a while, I think.
Ah, is that back parking lot still owned to them?
I think so, maybe.
So it looks, it looks like your lot. That's the building.
Okay.
So when you come in, that's, that's the ambulance.
That was the original Mercy Program.
Yeah, a lot of songwriting.
Okay, let's move on, you get your question answered there, Mr. Oldby.
Yeah, I hate to be the guy that opens up the sandwich, but, you know, public comment, everybody wants to know what's going on.
No, that's, 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 thank you.
Better to have that discussion here than out somewhere else.
Thank you, guys, I know it's not your, I know, I know it's, you guys will have faithful take care of it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so, moving on, new business, resolution for cancellation of outstanding checks. I've seen that list, you have that, we just.
Just has to be done anu- annually.
Yeah.
I put the statute in there. That it refers to. In most private industries, you would send that to unclaimed property, but you don't do that for county, it's just statute driven.
So Susan, can you tell me if anybody, these are checks written, so if they find the check in their sock drawer and they come in to a bank to cash it, what will happen?
It'll probably get cashed and we'll have to figure it out on the accounting side. Because I'm not paying twenty-five dollars for every one of those to
Stop payment.
Okay, so we're just giving you the permission to take them off your register as debts, okay?
Yeah, avoid them.
Some of them, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have a resolution number?
Twenty-seven, twenty-five, I think.
Yes. I move we approve resolution twenty-seven, twenty-five for Bourbon County, Kansas, cancellation of warrants, uh, for K S C A nineteen, nineteen-three-twenty.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Tran?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Who did you get downstairs after, Justin? Tran? Okay.
Okay, so next, K A C, Kansas Association of County Convention, it says in December. But, uh, and I think you all got an email from them regarding, uh, the upcoming convention and that you need to be registering sometime this month. I've got the email.
Who's it from again?
Kansas Association of Counties.
They don't like me.
I didn't get it either.
You have to sign up for it.
Twenty-twenty-five annual, um, conference being Wichita. Uh, registration, if you're interested, would be, um, some, some time this month. So I'm just bringing that to your attention, if you, huh?
You can register till, till nine.
Till when, sir?
You can re, you can register up till today.
Yeah, but the, you're gonna lose the, 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 the association rates start dwindling down as occupancy.
If you, if you haven't already got rooms at the Hyatt, they're probably still.
But I would say that if you're wanting to attend, reach out to the clerk and, uh.
Did you get a block of rooms or anything, you know?
They, they get a block, but there's a cheaper block across the street.
So when would you need to know?
As soon as possible, or you won't have a room, you'll be across town.
I guess I'll register when I get back to the house tonight, and what, what, what are the inclusive dates?
December ninth.
Nine through the eleventh?
Yeah.
It's Tuesday, Wednesday.
All right, yeah, I'll, I'll go to that.
I would like to attend, so I'll, I'll be registering and I'll reach out to you.
And if you haven't had enough budgeting and financing, there is a one-day seminar on September nineteenth in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
September nineteenth.
Had them here. Okay, so that, uh, moves us to audit agreement for year ending twenty-twenty-five, do we just need to sign on that?
Who does your youngest audit?
Jared, Yelmore, and Phillips.
Yeah, and they come and gave us an audit.
They're, they're good.
Yeah.
Let's.
They give recommendations since they just gave us the audit process.
Do I?
As your little lady gives a recommendation.
Hard to find a good auditor, you're also busy, they don't take any good.
Do you have just, do you have two coffees here? Is that what's holding on you, possibly? Okay. I think if you sign this one, David.
Huh? I'm the one.
Yeah, we probably need a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the audit and sign the agreement for fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Milburn?
Yes.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Tran?
Yes.
So just to be clear, you guys are gonna register yourselves and you'll just let me know if you need hotel space.
How are we supposed to do it, that's, I thought, I thought I had to register with the K A C myself.
You'll need to, if you wanna get their emails, you'll need to register to do that, but I can register you for the event if you would like for me to.
Please, I'd much rather have that be public or whatever, whatever process is, I wanna.
David, you want the same?
Yes, and what about you, you don't know yet?
No, I don't know yet.
But I mean.
Wait, I don't have to wear a suit and tie, do I?
Yeah.
You have to wear Bourbon County colors.
I don't even have those.
What, to the?
Oh.
To the conference?
Yeah.
They'll give you a big old, they'll give you a big old badge on the line here.
I know, that's what they did when we went to the.
That's your admission ticket to all the stuff.
All right, next on the, hand them back to her, I'm trying to narrow it down, so. So next on there is policy and procedures, I've handed you guys copies. Uh, this is a memorandum for a temporary policy, uh, regarding, um, hiring and terminating, terminating employment. Follow memorandum will take effect immediately as the operating policy for hiring and terminating employees with Bourbon County relating to the Public Works Department, Bourbon County EMS, Appraiser's Office, Courthouse Maintenance Department, and Emergency Management. The Bourbon County Employee Handbook is void of a hiring policy providing guidance for supervisors and selection process. Uh, an effective hiring policy focuses on attracting, assessing, and selecting the best candidates while ensuring fairness, consistency, and legal compliance. It involves a well-defined process that includes, uh, clear job description, structure, structured interviews, and thorough background checks. The Bourbon County Employee Handbook termination policy is located within the disciplinary policies on page fifty-eight to sixty-two. Termination of an employee is mentioned on page fifty-nine as step three of this policy. At-will employment is mentioned in the beginning of this handbook, forming employees that no contract of employment has been entered into and that either party may terminate without cause. An effective termination policy provides a clear legally compliant and respectful process for ending an employee's employment. It should outline the steps, guidelines, and rules that management and H R must follow, ensuring fairness and consistency while minimizing legal risk. The Employee Handbook does not have an established job performance evaluation program. Employees have no formal guidance to help them build on their job performance. An effective employee, uh, performance evaluation policy should be comprehensive, fair, and transparent, outlining clear expectations, evaluation criteria, and feedbook, feedback mechanisms. It should emphasize ongoing communications development and alignment of individual goals with or organizational objectives. The Human Resource Department is in the process of updating the Employee Handbook and completing a supervisory supervisor policy section. Uh, in the interim, the department heads for, for Public Works Department, the Bourbon County EMS, the Appraiser's Office, the Courthouse Maintenance Department, and Emergency Management in regards to current vacancies, disciplinary action, or potential termination of employment for Bourbon County will be reported to the Human Resource Department and approved by the Board of County Commissioners. That's what I am recommending. Discussion.
It's, um, it's needed, there's so much to unpack here, but, um, the policy's needed. I'm just astounded that this wasn't in place previously, you know, so I appreciate what you're doing. I second it.
I didn't make a motion yet, I just, I, I, I read it, I read it, you know, we can discuss it, um.
If you guys are ready to move forward with this exact copy to give to Dr. Cohen to put in the, uh, manual, then, um, I would like to consult, did you consult him about it first? Okay, I, I would rather, since he's already on the, the payroll there, consult him about it, see what he says, see if he has any suggestions, and then we bring that one.
I see that too.
That's just my take.
Right, I, 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 I see that too.
Okay, well, I'll reach out to him and, uh,
Sounds great, yes.
Discuss it with him, and then, uh, we'll table it to the twenty-first as well, isn't that when we do the camera one?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
All right, so we'll move, move that to the.
Twenty-one July?
Seven-twenty-one.
You worked hard last week, you got, you brought a lot of things to the table, good job.
Yeah.
You type all that?
Yeah, I did.
Went after it.
On a.
Talked to text.
On a, no, it was, A I helped a lot.
Yeah, they say you talked and it typed it in.
Yeah, exactly.
No, I didn't talk, it was on my, it was on my laptop, but, you know, I did, I did have to look and type and all that stuff, but, yeah.
You don't have another copy of that, do you?
Yeah.
Cause, yeah.
I can email you one.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, next on the agenda item is, um, we covered those three resolutions, uh, would be Commissioner comments.
Can we go?
Sure.
Yeah, so this last week I got some, some hate mail, so I will address that. Um, citizens of Bourbon County, I wanna start with, I understand your frustrations, we cannot and will not agree on all topics. However, please know that I have the best interest of Bourbon County at the base of every motion I make. I also have the best interests of Bourbon County on my mind when voting on motions made by other commissioners. I understand it is hard to keep control of your emotions when reaching out to me to express yourselves, but I'm going to ask you to try anyway. Aggressive, mocking, and derogatory political terms and name-calling discounts your credibility with me greatly. I'll also like you to understand that the excess, the executive sessions are there for a reason and are not being abused to speak about anything other than the code quoted when we are preparing to enter the executive session. Please know that I share as much as I can without oversharing, causing an additional liability for Bourbon County. Uh, citizens of Bourbon County, again, thank you.
Commissioner Tran?
I do share much of what Commissioner Milburn just stated, there are things that we can talk about and there's things that we can't. And we can't blur that line. So, I mean, I understand people getting frustrated, getting upset, and using their keyboards to lash out, and I, I get that, it's, we all have freedom of speech. But please be aware that the three of us are doing the best that we can, sometimes it may not seem that way, but believe me, you know, when the three of us are sitting here with our counsel, with everybody's help, we're, we're doing the best we can. I am remiss in not stating ahead of time that there's a lot of people within this county that are doing a really, really good job. And I don't think that we as commissioners say it enough. So the budget was done last week, and to that, um, my thanks to the treasurer, my thanks to the clerk for all the work that they put into it, um, and anybody else that may have assisted the commissioners, 'cause I'm essentially the new one here right now. Well, keep pushing, we'll keep trying to do the best that we can, there's gonna be a lot more issues out there that it's gonna basically be, you know, contentious for some of us and great for others, and in the end, it's, it's, it's not about the three of us, it's about the fourteen thousand of you that are out there. That's what we're here for, okay, so thank you very much, thank you for your support, so have sir.
And I'll echo, uh, regarding public comments, uh, I mean, freedom of speech, I've always, uh, supported it, I always will. Uh, when I first started, uh, talking, I talked on Facebook and, uh, I always ended it, you know, whether you're for or against, you know, uh, speak your mind, um, I think as, as, you know, we just celebrated the Fourth of July, you know, so we're all, you know, as Americans, I think we, we should have common respect for each other, uh, and, uh, if you don't, then, I mean, so be it, uh, you probably won't get a response out of us. Regarding some of the things that, that, that were mentioned recently, uh, and, uh, we're not gonna get into detail, but regarding litigation was solar. Uh, it's common knowledge, it's, it's public information that they are working on a settlement, and when they reach that for us to sign and both parties have signed it, then it will probably be released to the public as to what happened. And, and what, what deals were made or what, what, where we went with that. So, I mean, we're not gonna discuss it until then because frankly, uh, it's still an ongoing process, and I wouldn't want to, uh, damage that process, so. Uh, that being said, you know, uh, those that put it out there on Facebook and, and. Uh, that being said, you know, uh, those that put it out there on Facebook and, and said otherwise, uh, there has been no deal made. So, uh, till we sign that deal and they sign that deal, it's not official. So, that's it. Uh, any other comments you guys would like to make? Alright, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. Milburn?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Tran?
Yes. Yeah.